Oops.
Yeah.
It was cold. It was cold. Bob Kents took the second half of the game off. He stayed right off the roof.
Yeah, they wanted to stay there for a while.
I guess. I guess.
How long has it been since you didn't go down and watch the game?
I've been watching for the last five or six years. I used, oh no, there we were. We used my ass on it. Sitting in inferior seats.
I've got a brother-in-law making that call.
Oh, I know. I just grew up there. It's like, it's kind of creepy. It's kind of, it's kind of, it's all. Yeah, it's getting, I'm, I'm beside on a farewell. Nice dinner tonight.
It was great.
It was great. It was very pleasant. I wish I was a kid, but when you play to a ten, you want to do that.
Make this one. Oh, you're required.
Yes.
No, I was going home at the same time. So I was just, you know, you buy that.
You've been, you've been doing it yet?
Five to four years. Phone me later.
Uh, so we, we got into a herd about sixteen.
Disappeared.
Trudable people, they're all set for, they had a cow tag. One trudable bull and it stayed right in the center of the herd.
What's that, yeah, on his side?
And it was like, it was sensible enough. Yeah, it was a little coward, killed him.
This chair sometimes downstairs.
My grandson got his third, he's thirty years old, he's been held.
Where is he going?
Fifteen. Going back over.
Over. Do you stay in the same areas or are you moving down to different areas?
No, I stay in the same area.
Same area.
Some two, some two. Two of them. And. Can't walk well.
Have I already told you where, where I'm coming from?
Come on in, everybody. Please stand for the pledge, please.
Let's lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That comes to my mind, too.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy Thanksgiving week.
Thank you.
Public comment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Tim Raddaldal. You missed last Wednesday's hearing on the purchase of the building. And I'd like to go on record this morning with you, President, highly opposing how the process is leading us as citizens in the, in the participation of public meetings. Right out of the chute, the driving force behind the Perry Building is, of course, or was, of course, the recycling program. Needing a place to put that. The benefit was to bring other departments in, which gave further justification for that. The hearing, an immediate opening, was limited to be restricted of discussing anything to do with the recycling program. And furthermore, as we continue looking at policy adopted by this commission for affording the people an opportunity to participate, we find, under statute, under the Constitution, this body should be encouraging participation. And in fact, the opposite is happening. Seven dash one dash forty-one, forty-two clearly says about encouraging participation. Local government is where the root of our republic is. And I, I need to emphasize that we need to make every effort in Broadwater County to afford public participation in the process, not after. The public comment period understanding is within bounds at the beginning of the meetings for anything outside of the agenda items. But if we are not allowed as citizens to participate in the process before final decisions are made, E.G. Wednesday's hearing, the driving force was eliminated from the hearing. We need to make sure that we have that opportunity to be at the table, not after decisions are made. That whole key of Article Two, Section Eight of Montana Constitution provides for us to participate in government actions prior to final decisions. Madam Chair, I appreciate your time this morning. And I look forward to some changes in allowing that participation to be full-put. Thank you.
Father's Paul.
Yes. Paul Bray. Just a citizen representative. Madam Chair and, and council members, commission members, I want to go on record as saying I would like to be able to appreciate our government and our community. There are so many positive things happening in this community that we just, we, we lose track of them. There are thousands and thousands of donated hours in this community every month, every year. We have everything from a waitress at the Mint Cafe who, with her brother, puts up the lights on the tower every year, has for thirty-five years or more, to all of the other things that go on in this community. I'm sick and tired of all the negativity. And I, I really compliment the council on the positive things that you do. And I really want to reprimand the part of the council that does all the negative things. You can do it, Franklin. You can do it. Start thinking for yourself. You don't have to let these other people think for you. You don't have to let them put words in your mouth. Let's be positive for our community. Let's keep growing. Let's keep on being who we are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Since I was directed to me, I'm gonna answer back. Please do.
John. Do your call.
I've made decisions. I've been self-conscious I got out of high school. So I can make decisions. I ask people what they think on a lot of stuff. Because that's pretty darn important to know what's taking place that way. And as far as, uh, volunteer. I've volunteered, in fact, Mr. Kearns is right there behind you, hundreds and hundreds of hours through the years. That's all I have to say.
John.
You know, John Wright, just what I just heard, spoke out here, of all the good and bad, that's true. But when our established government, which is primarily here in the commission's chambers, where our, uh, most of the decisions are made, effective not all of them, for anybody to get up here and say, there's no wrong here and there's nothing going wrong, just like Tim said, when you go off on a track of not allowing us to present ourselves. I yesterday, or last commission meeting, I think it was Wednesday, I walked out of here when I heard what was happening. I wouldn't come in because I only knew it would be a row. Tim said it better than anybody can say. And this must be corrected at all costs and every level to give us our rights to intervene on these decisions before they're made, not afterwards. That is a violation of your oath of office. And it's very serious.
Thank you, John. Other comments. Bill.
Bill Kearns, I got my tax notice and I was pleasantly surprised to see that my taxes went down eighty dollars. And in talking to some other people, I've heard everything from forty to a hundred and sixty, though these are mainly homeowners. So I, I, my hat's off to the commissioners for, I don't see how you do it. And I guess I remind you that, you know, you are the keeper of our assets here. You put new roofs on the courthouse, you pay, you buy police cars, you, you do all these things. And for our taxes not to keep going up, I don't know how, how you do it. So compliments to all the commissioners for the good job.
Thank you very much, Bill. Other comments. Okay. We have five minutes before we start with Judy.
A letter from the Trust Board to the Commissioners, transfer of funds for Broadwater Trust Board. The Broadwater Trust Board voted to request a transfer of one hundred thousand dollars from the Trust Board First Premier Account to the Trust Board County Account. The First Premier Account balance as of October thirty-first, two thousand thirteen is two million, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, five hundred and sixty-two and sixty-one cents. Amount of the Trust Board must maintain in that account is two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Therefore, the Trust Board is over that threshold. Broadwater County would ask that the Broadwater County Commissioners approve and complete the paperwork for this transfer as soon as possible. Thank you, Virgil Bankly, Trust Board Chair.
Is that a motion or?
I'd make a motion. Go ahead and try for that.
I'll second it so we can go to discussion. I believe that should be on the agenda. Would be happy to put that on the agenda for next week's meeting.
You can do that. And let's hold the motion until next week.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
This is also from the Trust Board, Broadwater County Commissioners, regarding purchase of new docks at Broadwater Bay. On November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, the Broadwater Trust Board meant to discuss the purchase of three docks from Goose Bay for the Broadwater Bay Silos Recreation Area. The Trust Board is proud to announce that they have voted to transfer sixty-one thousand to the Broadwater County for purchase of the docks. Broadwater Trust requires the Silos Recreation, pardon me, area to give Broadwater Parks and Recreation Committee twenty percent of the gross profit from the dock rentals for ten years from the date of purchase. The Trust Board understands the increase in voters to the area and in need for additional docks. This will increase the usage of the Silos area and make for a better experience for many residents of Broadwater County. Thank you, Virgil Bankly. And I think that needs to go on next week's meeting also.
Okay.
Okay, and this is back at us again, I guess. Brendan took it last time. It's a claim for twenty-eight hundred and eighty dollars for two hundred and forty yards of gravel for one mile of road up there, uh, the Sweeney Place for Bob and Yambazola. The search and rescue, it's my understanding, tore up the road pretty badly when they were out on the search for the gentleman that they end up finding. And he had deceased. And so the road was, according to Brendan, was thawing and freezing, and thawing and freezing. And the roads are on the rails. So this is for two hundred and forty yards of gravel to repair the road.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
What road is that?
It's...
The Pulprick Road?
No, it's not. It doesn't say what the road is. I can tell you how to get there. I'm not sure. It's on Bob and Yambazola's property. And what happened was the search and rescue were going in and out numerous times, in numerous vehicles, and they tore up the road. So it's impassable.
Brenda was here last week. She explained it.
Yeah.
We agreed then. Go ahead and take care of that.
We actually didn't. It should be signed by Brenda as the department chair or department head for that, for search and rescue. And I don't believe it has been. She gave it back to Winn. And I talked to Winn about that on the phone. Search and rescue does not have the funds for that. There were a couple missteps made, so it did turn into a learning opportunity. But they, uh, search and rescue per Winn is looking for assistance paying that bill. So upon signature by the department head, I would move that we go ahead and allocate those funds to take care of that road that was...
The claim still is not signed.
And I, I would move that we go ahead and take care of it upon signature. As soon as she signs it, then I, I think those funds could be released, but not till then.
It was in the minutes that this was taken care of last, last week.
Madam Chair, if I may, I went back and listened to that. And the motion was made and seconded, but it was never voted on.
That was my understanding. Brenda needs it. I need that claim.
And we don't ever follow through on the claim without the express wishes of the department head. I just think that's good management on our part.
Ellie, how much is the amount of this cost us taxpayers?
I think I stated it was two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Okay. Did you second that?
Yeah.
It's moved to second and then upon signature of the department head, we paid Bob Gamba Zola two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for a road into their property that was torn pretty bad. Judy, come on up. I'm partnering.
Just real quick, for your information, Bob's gonna haul the gravel himself and do the work. We'll cover the gravel.
Did he pay, was he paid his contract amount?
No, he's...
Point of order, madam.
All we're doing is just paying for the gravel.
We have a discussion going on, which is, is absolutely opposing Roberts was order number one and number two.
I think the public knows what's going on, too.
We should go around it before moving on.
All right. It's moved to second and then that we paid the claim for two hundred, two thousand, I'm sorry, eight hundred and eighty dollars to Bob Gamba Zola for repairing their road. It'll come out of search and rescue. And we need the claim signed by the sheriff and then everything will go. All in favor?
Madam Chair, what was discussed was not taking it out of search and rescue because according to the phone call from Winn, they do not have that money. That is a bare bones budget, unfortunately. It, it just was not funded by the sheriff at this point. We are still waiting on a proposal for the funding for that budget. So I propose that we take it out of another fund. We could take it out of Pilt or contingency fund.
Okay.
We agree. That's what was decided last meeting. Maybe we didn't say what fellow to take out of, but we knew couldn't go on a search and rescue.
Brenda came up and said, I want to take that. And so everything just kind of stopped on it right there. It's, okay, but moved to second and then that we pay this claim, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing, say motion carry. Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
Well, we're just, this is our quarterly meeting that we are always scheduled for. And we don't have a lot to discuss. We, to bring to the table today, we figured that we might have a few questions that might be fielded over the last couple of weeks and months from the issues that have occurred through the legal decision that was brought down from the district court. So we thought we'd make sure that we attended today just in case there were any questions. Currently, we're in the process of reviewing how that'll impact the county further with the other subdivisions. We're waiting for a legal decision on how we will proceed forward with these subdivisions that didn't file an AB twenty-six. So, um, right now, we're, like I said, we're still waiting for our legal department to give us some direction on that and from leadership as well. So as soon as I have more information on where we're going to go with that for, based on that legal decision, there has been discussion that because other subdivision owners did not file an AB twenty-six, that we would just make the changes effective for two thousand fourteen and move forward with that. Again, that is only been a discussion. It isn't been set by legal or by management. So just to kind of give you a heads up that we're still not sure where we're going in the future stuff, just to give an opportunity to maybe ask any questions on what's kind of transpired in the last couple of months.
Did this affect all counties, subdivisions in New County?
Um, there, it has affected a few other counties. Not many. It has affected Lewis and Clark. They haven't had as many subdivisions because the problem that happened with the subdivisions in Broadwater County is that they subdivided and then the lots never sold. In other counties, when they subdivide, the lots are sold very quickly normally. And so you don't have a huge amount of parcels in contiguous ownership that usually changes down to a smaller amount. So moving it into tract land as opposed to being non-qual or ag, it doesn't seem to be as much of an issue because the lots are actually sold. And then, you know, the smaller lots are assigned correctly at that point to being tract land, ag, or non-qual.
So is it because there's so many lots available for sale in Broadwater County, is that why we're so affected?
I, and I have, I don't have a lot of background and, and I apologize as to why. I think at some point, we had determined that, based on covenances, that if they say that they were not qualified to have agricultural land on there, that we had determined, that the department had determined that then they wouldn't qualify and they needed to be moved to tract land. The legal decision that was made said that, no, we wouldn't qualify them as tract land if they still stated contiguous ownership. So that was the determination that the department had made that was overruled. Rocky, do you remember what year that happened? That we had started to subdivisions?
Well, we started reviewing subdivisions statewide in oh-four and oh-five. There was a statute passed by the legislature that expanded, there are numerous statutes that impact ag land. And this one said that if the covenants effectively prohibited ag use, that you could not put it in class three land, which non-qual is part of. And so we proceeded and went through and looked at all the covenants statewide in that county, looking for the ones. In Broadwater County, and this is to the best of my knowledge, I was not manager at the time, but there was such a large development down here on the south end. Typically, subdivisions come in, they average size, I suppose, thirty, forty lots, something like this. Few lots sell. One of the qualifications for non-qual ag land, which is kind of an interim step, it's not actual ag valued as ag land, it's an interim step, is that if the ownership is the same and the contiguous ownership is twenty or more acres, up to a hundred and fifty-nine, that they go into this non-qual classification in class three. After that, if they don't meet that, they go to tract land. Well, there was the review done by legal on some of the new subdivisions down here and in a few other counties, where they felt the covenants restricted the use such that they could not be in class three, agricultural or non-qual. And so those changes were made. Some of the subdivision owners took it to appeal, which is their right. Everyone has that right. They went all the way to the district court. And district court in Gallatin and for the ones here in Broadwater did not find in favor of the argument that legal made for the classification and said, no, change it. So then the department had to send out and go, okay, or to district court. Legal has to analyze, are we gonna appeal? Either party can appeal a decision all the way through the process. And the decision was made not to appeal. So therefore, that's why we came back and changed ones that we were directed by the court.
Well, didn't SKS change ownership?
It did.
So shouldn't that thrown that out?
No, SKS and ownership, as long as they were in the new owner, the change in ownership, there were several things that went on with SKS. We had an ownership change partway through it. Then it came back on a foreclosure. Then that person hired attorneys. They came back in and were in settlement, or litigation talks with our legal department. So it was, there were several things. On Coulter's run, there was also a foreclosure. Yellowstone Bank became involved. And then there's timing issues.
They had all time in their appeals, though, through the ownership, the appeal to continuous with each ownership change. So they were in, in, they were timely in their dispute with the department.
Now, the Fritchy subdivision was involved, was it not?
There are additional subdivisions that they had, didn't file an AB twenty-six. So those are the subdivisions that we will take a look at once legal has given us the guidance. Because many subdivisions, when they had found that their covenances were restricting them from having ag status, they had gone back in and actually changed their covenances to say that they could indeed have ag. So at this process, at this time, we have eight subdivisions that, approximately eight subdivisions, that would still have reviewed under fourteen based on the fact that they didn't change their covenances. And that, so they still would be eligible for the correction after this legal decision. Not correction, but the revised determination that we're being, we're taking into consideration because of the legal action.
It won't, we won't find out at the last minute, please.
Well, the problem with that is, like Rocky said, is that, you know, you guys were giving your notice the same time we were for the legal decision that was nailed to the, to the commission at the same time that we were given that information. The unfortunate part about this is that a lot of this stuff, from my standpoint, you know how things come down the hill. I gave you the information. I was given the information on the sixteenth. And on the twentieth, when the very first day that we came back and there was time for me to come back. So the leg for me was three days after I actually got the information from legal. So I felt like I gave it to as timely as I possibly can because legal decisions, when legal, because after the district court was given it, they had time to make a decision on that. So as soon as I knew what was being directed, is, I came and we talked to Doug at the very next Monday. So I feel like I tried to get it to you as quickly as possible. Now, we all know dealing with legal counsel and things like that, things do take a little bit longer because they have a lot to consider because if they were going to appeal it to the next courts, that was something that they had to decide. So unfortunately, timing, and I, and I agree, timing was not the best in this issue. And quite honestly, we should have a legal decision long before our, even our assessment notices fall out. And I'm...
Suffice it to say, Commissioners, we on our end, at mid-level management, will be pushing very hard for a decision, especially prior to folks having certification values and folks having certain...
And we would appreciate that because Doug, we didn't have a clue. Doug went over to say, okay, I'm ready to run. And he said, no, we can't hold up.
Judy made the notice this last time. I followed up with it, but there is a chain of command. And unfortunately, Judy and I don't make priorities and determinations at that level. As soon as we were aware of the Hyde Decker decision, we knew it would have an impact to several counties that we know. And we started pushing for, where is legal going with this? When we got the answers, Judy said, we passed along this quickly, it's okay.
And I think that, you know, I think Laura, you had said it while we were talking on the phone that why won't we hold it up this sooner? I, I know that the legal decisions, when they come down, you know, they're shared amongst the, the commissioners from the, the department, from the, from the court system. We could have probably sat like we do with Paulette De Harts. And I sit together just before budgets are made and we go over protested taxes and things of that nature. So one of the things that I would like to propose is that we do the same thing next season, is that we take a time and we go over whatever protested taxes are on the book or if there are any legal decisions pending and things like that. So that, and, and this, unfortunately, I have to apologize. My first year really having run into a big problem like this, that we maybe take and learn from their example. And we do that in this county as well. So I think if we're proactive in that manner, we should never run up against the law with that because then maybe we can talk about it prior to budgeting just to kind of give you a heads up as to where the department's at and things like that. We would have still not had an answer at this point. We didn't know. But at least that's what we've done on the table for discussion. So that's something just in forethought here. Just try to plan for next year.
And I think that would be a great idea. Because we just felt like we got blindsided. So.
Can you update? Judy? I hope. And I, I do feel like that... And I, I do feel like that sometimes information doesn't come as quickly as we'd like. Will you be go-
So given that, Madam Chair, are there any other questions?
No, usual.
Do you foresee many other changes coming at us?
No ma'am, I do not. There, the other court cases that are pending and whatever, tend to deal more with central assessed. And to tell you whether they, how they impact every individual county, I can't because it's not something that I value or deal with or manage. But some of the others, some of the court cases have gone in favor of, I guess if you could say, they ruled in favor of the DOR. And so it eliminated potential issues or potential changes and fun stuff, so. But in the near future, no matter. Of course, December fifteenth, we have another legislative session. Just starts again.
So you're moving on, Ted?
That's right.
Did I stay away just long enough? Does anyone have other questions I can answer?
No. I just wondered if there was anything where it might come at us.
I think I just, right now, just refer back to the decision that we're waiting for on the additional subdivisions, as to how we're going to address those. And again, I feel pretty solid in thinking that we're going to try to take care of them in fourteen. And the other thing that we can do is we can provide with those numbers.
We appreciate it.
And just we know what they are and actually after they comes up with their decision.
And Judy will be able to get with, not only you folks all there, as we get closer to the reappraisal, there will be some things. I know the director has the intent of providing some public meetings on preliminary analysis, you know, values going up, values going down, or maybe the same in amongst the different classes. So there is an effort to try and get some analysis done so we have an initial preliminary inkling of, are we looking at huge changes in values and whatever, not only for local government, but for taxpayers too. So they have some idea of what this next reappraisal. So the next reappraisal is as of January one, two thousand and fourteen. That's what everyone's value will be set at.
And then another year, we might have the legislature make the changes.
Well, the nice thing is, as we go along and preliminary studies are done, they're given to the Revenue and Transportation Committee. So they can kind of plan if there is a need or if they perceive a need for mitigation. So we don't get what's called sticker shock, you know. Everybody's value goes up thirty thousand dollars in one year. Well, it's not actually one year, it's over six years. But they're given the opportunity and then of course, when they go into session, they have the right to change things and make it happen, so.
Well, those interim committees sometimes come up with committee bills, do they not?
Yes.
And that would be a tip off right there.
Yes ma'am. Now, if you watch out, they, especially the Revenue and Transportation Department Committee, they, they pretty intensive committee there. They study a lot of things. They're, they have a site out there, minutes are there, you can give them indication as to what's going on. Because it's not only reports that we're Department of Revenue, but Department of Transportation or anyone else that they believe they need to have figures from the study, analysis, whatever.
Well, my experience with the legislature was, a committee bill usually passes.
Yes ma'am, I mean, that's kind of, yeah, yeah. From our perspective, alls I can do is when they ask a question, give them the numbers and answer to the best of my knowledge and how to administrate what they pass.
As soon as you start feeling comfortable, we'll make a change. We know that's it. Rocky, would you mind coming on the office hours?
Yeah, the administrative girl, yes. So the new office hours are going to come into effect. They'll be effective next, yeah. The final thing until they get published by the Secretary of State. So there's always a little bit of lag time per week or whatever. But they're going to do statewide now, yes.
And what are those hours?
For you folks, it was Monday, Monday through Thursday with Friday. And Friday is, there will be no one in the office itself.
On Fridays?
On Fridays, yes.
And on the other four days of the week, what are their hours?
Eight to five. I believe the only county difference is Mark County. And they close down at four o'clock. So we say, yeah, close our offices at four also.
Makes sense.
They're later than that, but you know, they're out of here. So if you see this line, then you know what kind of good stuff it's passing.
And you know, sickness, things like that cause problems. So Judy will do the best she can to make sure you folks, the other offices and courthouse, if I believe everyone's notified, if in fact we didn't have an issue, we try and move people the best we can. If we say we're going to be open, we try. Sometimes.
You might see somebody from, with an unfamiliar face base in office on occasion. But we are trying to make sure that they're staying open at least, you know, every, you know, unless this week, we've had a rapid flu bug going on and we, very few people thought we did. You folks try to make sure you're putting that out there all the time enough we can.
If they had eleven people in Gallatin last week out with the flu, well, they've got a little larger staff, they just, they will keep it open. But you folks, you get two people out, that's it. They both get the flu, so Judy will do what she can to get someone over. Like she said, it could be someone out of Gallatin, could be someone out of Wilson Court, probably Wilson Court.
And that's a nasty flu bug. I got that in the other week last week, so I can verify.
So that'll keep you going, huh?
Exactly. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
A claim to Mako for Franklin to go to the elected officials' training registration in the amount of hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I don't know necessarily who the holders it should be with the claims. I just don't put in the, put aside that.
So you think they're not commissioned?
I don't have a time, you involve me.
No, because you're going to submit it.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm, okay.
A claim to the N A C C H O. It's for the Board of Health membership for two thousand and fourteen in the amount of sixty-two dollars.
I assign generally the commission claims that need signature as the vice chair. I'm not the vice chair of the Board of Health, so I can want to sign it. If you would like one of us to be certain, you can. Since we don't have a meeting for a while. But I didn't want to just take the initiative.
Don't decide yet.
Sure.
Good luck, sir. I have claims in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-four cents.
Will we pay those approved claims?
Second. Approved in second and then we pay the approved claims in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-four cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried.
That, Madam Chair, is attachment A. And that has the new mill values as determined by DOR after the twenty-first of October. And we do need to have a vote just to approve those, even though taxes have come out. So I move that we approve the mill values on attachment A.
Okay, do I take a look at that?
When did that come out?
That's the-
This was after?
After the budgets were set. This is the change that DOR need with the subdivisions?
What was our motion?
To accept.
I'll second it.
It's moved in second and then, do we accept the two thousand thirteen, fourteen mill levies? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. A letter from Fish, Wildlife and Parks. Dear Commissioner Obergeiss, over the last year we met-
Madam Chair, that, I did write a note. That wasn't just sent to me, it was sent to the entire commission. That's just why it's in the mail.
Oh, okay. Over the last year, we met with several of you regarding a variety of wildlife issues. I thought it might be helpful to broaden this effort by inviting all Broadwater County commissioners in Region Three to our first annual Region Three overview. This meeting is scheduled for nine until twelve o'clock on December ninth at the Whitehall Community Center in Whitehall. We manage a number of wildlife-related issues that are important to you and your constituents. At our overview meeting, we intend to address upcoming big game season setting, wolves, grizzly bears, brusellosis sinell, bison, bighorn sheep, wolverine, water rights and in-stream flow and potential dangerous species listing of grayling and sage grouse. In addition, Jerry Walker, Region Three Parks Manager, will address several state park issues, vehicle registration as a state park funding source, state comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, weed control issues, major captive projects in the parks, legislative priorities in state parks, marketing, private efforts and benefits to local economies. Please let us know if there are other issues important to you or your constituents so we can add those to the agenda. Please let us know who will be attending from your county by sending an email to Shirley Sweaker and, or calling her in for a moment. I enclose a draft agenda for your meeting on, for August on December ninth. I will add additional agenda items based on suggestions from you. Thank you for your consideration, but what would you see in all of you?
That's a meeting night?
December ninth. At nine o'clock.
That is a Monday, but if we moved our meeting to Wednesday, which is the second Wednesday of the month, which is one of our days as resolution to meet, we could attend that meeting on the ninth.
I think it would be important to be there.
Okay.
What are your thoughts Franklin?
Oh, I don't care. Most times it's not only state agencies, it's just kind of a thing they throw out there to tease people. I mean, I don't know how important it is to go on it.
I would like to, because we have so many hunters in our community and fishermen, all those things, I think it would be for the betterment to be able to inform our constituents what's going on.
I agree with you. I think one of the most important aspects of our job is to be informed and be a resource for people with questions. Going and finding out the answers or learning what's going on is certainly what we're hired to do.
Do you want to make a motion, ma'am, please to?
Sure, I move that we attend the F W P meeting on the ninth of December and change our meeting to the second Wednesday, which is December eleventh.
I second it. It's moved in second and then that we change our meeting from December ninth to December eleventh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. One quick question?
Yes ma'am. If you are going to attend that, going to attend that meeting as a citizen, it's very important to me to have you emphasize the importance of addressing the predator problem in Broadwater County. If that is not on the agenda, I ask you to please bring that up. We have wolves moving in more and more all the time.
A minute. What is on the agenda is welcome at nine o'clock, review agenda at nine fifteen, nine twenty, update, status review and question and answer on assortment of wildlife and fishery issues, big game season setting, wolves, grizzly bears, brusellosis sinell, bison, bighorn sheep, wolverines, water rights and in-stream flow and potential endangered species listing of grayling and sage grouse. At eleven, update, status review and question and answer on an assortment of state park issues, vehicle registration as state park funding source, state comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, weed control issues, major captive projects in the park, legislative priorities in state parks, marketing efforts and benefits to the local economies in the general drug, so we can do that.
Thank you.
Elaine, I'd be happy to RSVP. I do plan on attending. Do you want me to RSVP as well? Franklin, I'm assuming no?
On what?
On attendance meeting. You just voted again.
Ten forty-five, decision, proceed or not with weed, mosquitoes, solid waste, chemical equipment and storage, discussion?
We actually voted on this on Wednesday. Having the public hearing was kind of overkill. We had two prior to that. One little piece of information that has come up since then that I feel- One little piece of information that has come up since then that I feel I should add, and there's an RFP in there that I do want, just for you guys to review as well, that was vetted with several different entities. But Search and Rescue, a couple of years ago, built a new building over an old building. They do not have sewer or water established in that building for insulation. They would like a meeting room, they would like a shower, they would like a restroom. They need the shower after some of their searches. So Mike looked into the materials required in order to do just the basic search and rescue, and it would cost twelve thousand dollars in just material, no labor. He looked at the same requirements for the Perry Building after the meeting on Wednesday, and it would cost between three and four, so a third to a quarter of that price. I did talk to Lynn, and he said that Search and Rescue would be more than happy to partner with solid waste, mosquito, and weed, with the desire to acquire the Perry Building. And then they would be happy to use that as their meeting space and shower and bathroom facilities, since it's right next door. So in the signature file, should be those RFPs. One is an ad and the other one is the actual RFP. And I could be happy to look in the mail in case I put it in the wrong. I haven't put it on letterhead because I wanted both your eyeballs on this. And then also Herb Argabright sent a letter opposed to the purchase that he wanted included. That was received after the meeting on Wednesday. And we had another letter that was read into the record on Wednesday, that's the one.
It was read into the record?
But you could read both at the same time if you wanted.
Okay. Pardon me, an email from Herb Argabright. Please forward these comments to the Commissions for today's public hearing. I'm opposed to the purchase of any private property until the taxpayers have been satisfied, then an in-depth factual analysis has shown this purchase is the best and least cost and most favorable option available. It does not appear to make economic sense to remove property from tax base when the county already owns large adjoining parcels. I urge you not to take any action until all the facts are available. Signed, Herb Argabright. Another one. Dear Commissioners, I am in favor of the purchase of the Perry Building and lots. It is a good value and basically ready to use by three departments that urgently need space. Other options that have been explored require months, if not years, to have space ready to use and are more costly. Thank you for your wise decision in this matter. Ann Rousher. Comments, thoughts?
I guess all I need is approval. Like I said, we did vote on Wednesday to send out the RFP. The only thing missing from the ad is the address, which I'll have to get from the poll. But are you two okay with that RFP as it reads, or are there any edits you want to add? And do you want another vote just for the final?
I would read the advertisement for review of appraisal bids. Broadwater County will receive bids for certified general real estate appraiser for appraisal review of and the address until five PM Friday, December sixth, two thousand thirteen. It's Broadwater County Courthouse Clerk and Recorder's Office, five fifteen Broadway, Townsend, Montana, five nine six four four, or via email in our email address. Broadwater County is seeking qualified bidders to conduct a certified real estate appraisal of forty-five hundred square foot commercial building and five city lots intended for county purchase. Bid specifications, location maps, property addresses are on file and may be obtained at the Broadwater County Clerk and Recorder's Office. Interested parties may also contact the County Commission at two six six nine two oh two. Broadwater County reserves the right to reject any and all bids or to waiver any informalities in the building. Bids may be held at Broadwater County Courthouse for a period not to exceed forty-five days from the date of the opening of bids for the purpose of reviewing the bids and investigating qualifications of bidders prior to aborting the contract.
Letter sounds with you ma'am?
Yeah, I'll just fill in the address if you guys don't have any edits.
No, I think it's fine.
And then the end of one is the actual RFP and SOF, which is summary of qualifications, request for proposal and summary of qualifications.
Broadwater County is requesting proposal for a certified general real estate appraiser for a forty-five hundred square foot commercial building and five city lots in Townsend, Montana. Broadwater County requires a certified general real estate appraiser. Appraiser must follow uniform standards of property appraisal practices, statement of any password for Broadwater County or the landowner, statement of any relationship between Broadwater County, the landowner, and the appraiser, a resume of experience as an appraiser, certificates, training, or qualifications as an appraiser, familiarity with Broadwater County area, estimate of the time necessary to complete the appraisal if selected. Broadwater County is seeking returns within fifteen to thirty days of engagement. Summary report with form and scope of the report and any documentation supporting the appraisal. The client is Broadwater County. The effective date is the date the building is appraised. Broadwater County is seeking a response to this RFP no later than five PM December sixth, two thousand thirteen. Please submit proposal to Broadwater County Commission at five fifteen Broadway, Townsend, Montana, or in our email address. For more information, please contact Broadwater County Commissioners at two six six nine two oh two or our email address.
I move that we go ahead and submit the RFP.
It's moved in second and then that we go ahead and advertise with the RFP. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. It came up today that the reason for the Perry Building was because of solid waste. That is not true. We have been looking at buildings for a long time. Search and rescue needs space. The weed, chemicals are coming here to the building, and they're very toxic and very dangerous. And so we have talked for a long time about doing something about that. We have a building that was given to us by the Forest Service. We've been told it will cost over three hundred thousand to put that building up. So weed needs space. Virginia, do you want to address what the needs are with mosquito and...
Mosquito is, we need to place four trucks and then our extra supply. And then also, what we're looking at trying to consolidate, weed and mosquitoes bars are chemical stories. During the winter months, we are consolidated, but summer months, we tend to split them out just because they're coming and going in our different outfits. And so that's what we're looking at there. The other thing is mosquito boards looking at expanding and trying to buy a second truck and hogger unit, so we can adequately cover the areas right now. I have five different areas, so they basically can spray once per week, which isn't enough really, but that's all we can do right now. So looking at adding a second outfit at some point in future, but we have not done it because we have no place to put it. Those rigs need to be inside with that sprayer unit, so the UV rays don't break that stuff down. And then just the elements, I mean, the exposure on the pump and everything without having it covered all the time is just going to be more maintenance on costs.
That's true, and for all of those, you do have your heads on the mix.
And I'd like to reiterate the search and rescue need that was verbalized Friday.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does. Why should we be building two when we can consolidate? It just, physically, it's much more responsible.
Thoughts Franklin?
There's chemical stories like I stated last week. Probably got the best thing there is right there for chemical stories. That cargo, I don't know if anybody knows what it is, one of those cargo container, shipping containers. It spreads about four inches of cordon in it. And all it takes is just, they've been using it for years as a little milkhouse. Electric heater's been keeping it going. The thing I say is that I can't imagine that there isn't a backup heat in there. I know those little heaters work good, but, and I told Scott what I think should be done is, I don't know if there's just one circular, have another heater in there for a backup on its own circuit. So if this, if it really continues using this milkhouse heater or a heater similar to it, gets shorts out or something, kicks the breaker, there's a separate breaker, so that's, there's a backup unit for it. Other than that, it's...
Where does it sit?
It's behind that north building at the county shop there, the newer building there. It sits behind that. And if it comes to the point where, which I'm surprised it hasn't been, a containment area, it's a perfect thing for that. They'd have to decide where they would set it then, or a slab, put a stem wall, and you've got your containment area right there. And this is, like I say, it's completely separate and it's a... And if it's too small, they do have, I thought Scott said this was a twenty, maybe Virginia knows, but they make, apparently, there's enough room for all the chemical in there.
Only during winter storage when we're at our lowest inventory. How many times, there's not.
And there wouldn't be room for equipment?
Oh, no, there's no equipment in that. And it's just strictly chemical, that's all you want that to be separate by itself anyway, no matter what.
But there currently is a formula stored in that over winter because it will space for it in the shop now. So that's why the front part is just formula storage, the back part is chemical storage around.
That's just during the winter? Well, it's my understanding that... That Goku is maxed out, they can't get all their equipment in. So being able to put stuff in there.
So that's the problem I have in the winter time. If I do need to take mosquito truck out for a reason, like if I need to service it or, you know, be able to work on it, I cannot do that because it gets scrunched between bay doors and everything else that's put on it. So physically, I can't get the truck out during the winter at all. So it just makes it harder on us as a district to manage stuff. Because there are times when you're running the season, so you're going to put things off until fall in order to service the truck or service the sprayer, those type of things. And I never know, it's like I go down to get the truck and it's already gotten moved and already put between the bays, so I can't access it, or I can't get it out of the shop anyway, so... And then like my weed, my chemical storage, because of space limited at the county shop, the weed truck, the extra weed truck is parked right in front of my door. And so I literally have maybe three feet that I can get, kind of wind in and out to get into that area. So it makes it a little difficult to access mosquito stuff. And I just feel like we're the ones getting pushed to the side. I mean, weed's bigger because, you know, they got a bigger unit, but I can't access a lot of my stuff with the way things are now.
Comments?
There's a lot of options. It'd be quite easy to extend that building that's there, maybe a couple more days for additional storage.
What would that cost?
Well, I'm figuring on it, I just talked to different ones, but, you know, tried to talk to Scott on that one last spring. The only time I was down there, when I looked at where the chemical storage was, about the way the building is, the original building, I don't think there's any way for a person to add on to that. This building here, I mean, you'd already have one part of it there, it'd be easy enough to...
Which building?
The storage building that's there that the, well, the, Search and Rescue had the north end of it at one time, and then they moved it up when they put the new building up. And off that east side, it'd be very easy, just all you'd need there is just a roof extended out there. I think they've already got outlets there for to plug the trucks or whatever they need, you know, and to put just a shed roof out or that like machine shed type thing, you know.
But wouldn't you need three walls?
Well, on this, on the east side, you wouldn't. Going north, yeah, oh yeah, then a person, yeah, and just the extension of the building that's there. But I mean, for more, to keep stuff out of the sun, it would work good that way. And that part would be, presumably, we'd need any concrete for it or anything like that.
No.
But there's a lot of options there to look at.
Why don't you check into what it would cost?
Okay.
Let's see.
Okay, I'll get with someone. I suppose, you know, your vocals. Okay, I don't want to actually check with one because we don't, we just want an estimate for right now.
That's all we need.
And so, okay, I'll... Okay, and I'll talk to Dana down there, too.
Right.
You know, other than to say this is, you know, this discussion is not a public hearing, but it is a public meeting, and it would be number four that we've had on this. So, you know, I do feel that the Department has have talked about their needs. We had Dana here on Wednesday talking about his needs for space as well. So I just guess I wanted to reiterate that this is, this is something that has been discussed in the public now four times.
Well, yes, it's a pretty big issue, it's got to be discussed a lot, there's a...
Yeah, and that's why I'm making that point, so that there's no question that this is something that has been brought out publicly many times.
So Virginia, with Search and Rescue needing, I mean, we obviously know that there's place for that. Everyone, mosquito board, the weed board, solid waste board, there's a building, a room in that building for a public meeting?
Yes, I know. I guess it depends on the piece that's on the west side, was like what Land Team has their office or their entry place. If Scott has moved a desk in there and does stuff for seasonal workers, there is no meeting room. And in Search and Rescue, it's originally talked to because we're going to try to combine showers, so they can come in and utilize that. Nothing has ever said before anyway about a meeting room. If that's what we're looking at, that would require additional space that I don't believe is present in there right now, unless you would utilize more of the shop space.
Well, I don't think, I'm probably the one that said meeting room, just because I thought that room was big enough.
One thing, this just came up on Friday over the phone with Lynn, and I did talk with the weed board and Scott about this as well. They would be willing to put the office requirement as a place, too, and the search and rescue does not need much, they need someplace that's temperate. That could work as a meeting room for the different boards, and then Scott would remain here in the courthouse for meetings. Mike has said he would be more than happy to meet with the chemical deliveries at the building whenever they were needing to deliver if Scott was in the field. The big thing that Solid, that Search and Rescue needs is the shower facility. When they're out doing a rescue, there are times when they need to have a shower, get warm. You know, we don't know what they're into, we don't know what the hazards are out there. But this is, this idea is brand new, but it was vetted through the weed board, and those are just some more details with it.
Well, because I have been able to walk through it, I have not done a walk-through, I'll admit that, I'll just... You said I'll be able to run, but not yet. Maybe I would, go ahead.
I think it'd be, presumably, we'll figure out something with Search and Rescue. I mean, sure, it's nice to have a facility, I was in Search and Rescue for probably, I don't know, twenty years, and I don't know, I've been on... And I don't know, I've been on all kinds of things, and then in the sheriff's department. And for another 25, it isn't hard to come up with something. Most of the time, those are never used. It needs to be a bathroom, all right? And if it works for a shower, which isn't that much more to put in when you're doing that. But it's, other than that, it's, it's pretty simple.
Well, and it looks to me like weed and mosquito would need a shower. They're out with those chemicals and...
Saying that could be tied in easy with this?
Yes. Very definitely. That would give them place to be able to wash the chemical off.
They don't have that.
No. And so they're having to take it home into their own facilities and it's not good. For them or anybody else.
So we got a lot of options to look at.
We have a lot of options to look at. In that search and rescue building, what is there for room?
What's that mean?
In the search and rescue building, what is there for room?
Yeah, I've only been in that a couple times because I was out of search and rescue after that. As there in the sheriff's department. There's a fair amount of room in there, because they built quite a little addition on that. I actually never, at the time, was either doing a search on a vehicle or something, so I never paid attention. Because I know they'd have something, put vehicles in that had, required search, so that'd be a good place to secure it.
And these women have to do that?
Oh, oh yeah. But I, and of course, they have increased more equipment, the search and rescue has through the years. But I'll probably get with Brenda or Wynne and go over it and look at it again. I might do that.
I think those are some things that we need. They may have worked in previous, but everybody's needs have changed.
I think I know what I'm getting with Brenda and Wynne on that. And then we're back.
Right, and then also what addition on that building?
Okay.
Just a rough estimate. That still wouldn't secure the shower.
No, that part wouldn't, no.
And of course, the estimate's already been produced by Mike for the cost to put in the meeting room, shower and bathroom in the search and rescue building, that materials alone are $12,000. Feel free to verify that.
I don't know how else you would, I mean, the RODCO, it's my understanding there's no shower there. I'm sure there's a bathroom facility, but that's all. What do you know about that, is there?
In the main building where Dana's office is and stuff, there's a small bathroom that during the daytime when that, when that is open, we can access it to go in and watch out if we're working on stuff. But after hours, then we don't have access.
We'll see what you can find out, Franklin. So that we have lots of options.
Right, right.
Any other thoughts, comments?
No, we'll just try and get some of these things figured out here.
Dear interested person, Montana Fish, Wildlife and Parks is requesting a public comment on the proposed 2013-14 Hellnut Urban Deer Take. Additional information is below, including the deadline for public comment. 2013-14 Hellnut Urban Deer Take proposed. The proposed 2013-14 take on urban deer that the city of Hellin allows for the lethal removal of up to 70 deer in addition to the 60 remaining on the authorization from last year. The take authorization, pardon me, would be valid through December 31st, 2014, with a no-take period extended from April 1st through November 14th of 2014. Benison from this effort will continue to be made public at the local food bank. Comments and scoping period deadlines and final adoption meeting. The public comment period on the proposed 2013-14 Hellnut Urban Deer Take will extend through 5:00 PM Monday, December 9th. Final adoption on this item will be made at the December 12th, 2013 commission meeting. To make comment, for further clarification, you may want to call the Wildlife Bureau Office at 406-444-2612. To submit comments electronically, this letter with the embedded link below can be found under Opportunities for Public Comment on the Hunting homepage at the FWP website. When comments can be taken at FWP Wildlife Division, attention, public comment in Hellin. Note the comment period deadline below. 2013-14 Hellnut Urban Deer Take proposed, deadline for public comment. On this item is 5:00 PM Monday, December 9th.
I think that's strictly fish and game, city of Hellin.
Well, that's, I don't know why we've got it.
See, that's what they do, they send all this stuff. And I think it's a good program they have there, and I'm glad to see that those carcasses go to the food bank there. And I think they've been doing a pretty good job and...
It sounds like it.
They've taken quite a few deer out of there.
Okay, and there's a comment form here for Montana Department of Transportation regarding the Toston Bridge. You're invited to make your comments on this form and place in the comment box or mail to Mariah Thunstrom, PE and DG Consultant and Project Engineer with her address. The deadline for comments is December 30th, 2013. Please indicate your name and address and affiliation if any below. Thank you for your interest and comments about this project. Please use the back and/or additional sheets of paper if necessary. Does this meet your needs? Did the meeting clearly explain the project? Do the proposed public meetings provide adequate opportunity for public participation? Do you have knowledge of the area or other information relevant to evaluating corridor options and/or highway bridge design? What is your preferred method for receiving project updates? Email, newsletter, meeting and other? So if anybody that wasn't at the meeting with DOT, we can make you a copy of this to be filled out.
Yeah, we were there, it was, they were kind of premature meeting. They couldn't really answer questions, they could tell you what to pass and somebody, they couldn't tell what size of bridge they're gonna have yet, you know. I mean, and so much of, most of them, they want to know how, what a person thought of the meeting.
And that's like the first meeting we had.
Oh, no, they had some good meetings a couple of years ago, but, and I was back there when a lot of people threw the questions at us and stuff. And they, I know they had this one person about crossing the, oh, the Ombard Road, she said, "How are you gonna get access to that?" Well, they had no idea. I don't think they had any idea that they're gonna be crossing the Broad on Reserve twice on that east corridor, you know. So much of stuff was, but anyway, there'll be a couple more meetings on this.
Oh, for sure.
It's good to get some comments in there. In fact, I think a lot of people at Toston Croker Carrier are gonna do some, I'm just predicting, they're gonna have comments, you know. And they're gonna use that, I think, for a basis, that one there, probably.
Well, and it's good, I mean, we all know that that bridge is a killer. I'm sorry to say, sometimes it's literally. But that would give them some options.
Excuse me, not a trick.
Yes.
December 30th is a deadline for comment?
Yes.
Thank you. But...
We're gonna have to get more out in the public, too. I haven't found only one person that knew anything about it.
Yeah.
A letter from Department, from Montana Association of Counties. Dear Commissioners, please find enclosed Montana's 2013 Land Use and Planning Statute Addendum, which are to be inserted into your books you received in your packets at the Mako Annual Conference in Hellin or in the mail. There is an adhesive strip on the back of the addendum, which is to be adhered to the inside of the back cover. If you need additional addendums, please do not hesitate to call me. Sharon Wilson, Administrative Assistant. This is the chairman Wynden and ranking member Markowski. We applaud your leadership in examining the need to reform the way the Forest Service copes with increasing wildlife management challenges and the need to reform the management of the national forest system. We commend you for your tackling of these national important issues on a bipartisan basis. At the testimony at both the June 4th and June 25th hearings, your committee demonstrated the status quo of the federal forest is unacceptable. Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management face a dire situation due to the growth of wildfire suppression spending, which has disrupted, disrupted, I mean, the already strained budget for forest management. This not only affects the operation of the national forest, but also causes severe economic consequences for the surrounding rural communities. We appreciate the committee's renewed focus on addressing the root cause of these economic and social hardships through reform of the national forest system intended to increase the pace and scale of forest management, including timber harvest. We also appreciate that the one year of bridge funding for the Secure Rural School Program that was included in the recently passed Helium Stewardship Act of 2013, until forest reform legislation can be enacted, we must have short-term bridge funding to prevent further economic dislocation in counties with significant federal forests. We look forward, pardon me, to legislation to restore the health of our federal forests and strengthening our rural communities, recognizing that we are in a moving budget environment where the land management agencies have to do more with less. Please let us know how we can work with you to improve the management of our, of our federal forests sincerely.
The reason that is in there, Madam Chair, is that was sent to the three of us via email by Naco Forested Counties Coalition. They are requesting that we put that letterhead or that letter on our letterhead and send it to the people listed on the top there. That is part of the work, I don't know if you guys have been reading it, but we've been getting about, I don't know, six or seven emails per week from Naco on their work on PILT right now. They would like us to submit that, many, many other counties already have, to show our support for their continued support of PILT. Right now, the helium bill, helium is just used for balloons. It's actually used in computer chips, apparently. And years ago, many years ago, nobody wanted to mine helium because it's very expensive, you can't make any money at it, but because it's needed, and it was needed for the war effort, how, I don't know. The government, actually, is the ones mining helium. So somehow, PILT and SRS got tied up in the helium bill. But anyway, that's what that's for, and our congressional district is right now two to one supporting it. Not PILT, but this particular legislation. And Senator Bockus is the only one who hasn't signed on yet. Representative Danes and Senator Tester both have.
Do we know why Bockus has not?
No, but I thought it would be a good idea to get a vote. If you guys don't have any edits, to have those letters sent, not only to Senator Bockus, but all the people listed on the top of the letter, including Senators Tester and Danes.
Yeah, fine.
I would appreciate one, and then stamp your signature unless you're here this afternoon and I get that done, or tomorrow morning. Or it could come in, you know what, maybe this is something, do you guys want all three of our names at the bottom and come in tomorrow morning just to sign it? Or do you want me to just put the chairman's name and stamp it?
I think it has more impact with all three names.
I personally do, too. I'll be here working, and I can have that done first thing in the morning, at my command.
I don't know. I ain't important or anything, but I don't know about getting in here. Well, it doesn't have to go out right away, anyway.
Actually, it really should.
If the letter was there, I could sign it anytime.
I would like to get this out rather than just waiting. It's already dated November 18th. I don't see a benefit to sitting on it and letting this chip slip without us at least working towards maintaining SRS and PILT payments. I, I don't see any reason to, you know, just put it in a drawer.
Why did you say put it drawer? I mean, if we don't get in to sign it tomorrow, it'd be a, I mean, a day or two's gonna make a difference.
Why don't we just send it off with mine and Elaine's signatures, then? Is that okay with you, it's still a majority? I'd still like a vote, then, if that's the decision. So I move we go ahead and send these letters off to the above-mentioned senators and congressmen.
Right, for that, and like I say, if the letter's made up and sent here for a day or so, if I get it signed, fine. If not, go ahead and...
Okay. It's moved and seconded then that we do elect Senator Ron Wynden and Senator Lisa Markowski. And one is the chairman and the other is a ranking member for the Energy and Natural Resources Committee of the United States Senate. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye, with a friendly amendment that we also send it to our own congressional delegation.
I agree. I agree. Are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I thought that was part of it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Community update. Go ahead.
A stamp signature. Do we, do you, now, there's one for the chairman, is everybody, can we have a stamp signature? When I, like this, I say, yeah, I'm for it, but I might not get in to sign it?
That would be a good idea.
So what's the procedure to get that done?
I guess Tammy would maybe order it.
Well, Tammy is not our secretary, so what you can do, we can, I can send you the link and you can just go on there, get it signed, you just email your signature and they send you back a stamp. So I'd be go ahead, happy to just send you the link.
Because it looks better, and I'll be the first to meet, we always can't get in here on a certain day, but it has more impact if all three signatures are there.
Yeah, no, I understand, it would be good if we had those, because...
Well, and I think the reason we have is because we both have been chairman before, and so they're used that way sometimes. Okay. Community update, Franklin.
Well, let's see, oh, the safety meeting, we all threw us at that, that LEPC and, and then the Toston Bridge, there was a... Yeah, those were the three meetings out there.
Anything exciting going on with them?
No, I read, I heard a comment on the, on the Toston Bridge part here. Reading the LPC, there was not that much take place on it. The safety meeting was, whichever way it's arranged, mainly over that near collisions, I forget what that was about.
Laura.
The Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, we met last week, which is timely since we have a juvenile now in Great Falls. And there's three targeted detention centers that work with juveniles that are part of this initiative. And the district judges are actually gonna be pulling some meetings together with this trial. And they've got to set, set up questions to see how things have changed, how money has been saved, how people have been... The goal is to divert juveniles from the detention world to being productive citizens versus creating lifetime criminals through the justice and detention systems. So the next meeting should be really interesting. Goose Bay, they've actually finished a part of it already, just a parking lot for the boats. boats, and there were some good suggestions for that. A lot is unknown at this point. It's a lot like the Toston Bridge meeting, at this point, there just is not a lot of solid information for them to give us, but the reason for these public meetings is for us to give them. This is the time for us to have, us as citizens, to have our own questions, our own ideas, and throw them out there. Especially with the Toston Bridge project, they had already implemented some of the public comment they got at the previous meetings, and, you know, yeah, it's boring, yeah, they don't have something to dictate down to us, but that's not what a public meeting is about. Public meeting is about, what does the public want them to work on? So that was true of both meetings. The public safety meeting actually will save us money as county taxpayers, as the county, to have a committee review every work comp claim and every insurance claim, and so our new chairs and vice chair and the commission met for that. L E P C, Mike talked about that last time he was here, our interim temporary D E S coordinator, put together a tabletop for an emergency, if there were a fire in the hospital, where would the patients go, how would it be done, what are the things to look, look at and know. He optimistically planned for thirty, and you guys know realistically, you expect to get fifteen, he had fifty-eight people attended, and so the L E P C meeting was a review of that, and there was a lot of really excited people talking about the things that they had learned, the things that they had witnessed at that meeting, and then I attended the weed board meeting also Thursday night, and just kind of listened to those guys throw out some ideas, that's it.
They're just doing homeworks?
No, they're just reviewing things, that's a really good board, that's some very thoughtful people with the long view for the county, and they're just kind of, right now, talking about how to make things better, more efficient, operations more smooth, get more done with less. So just listen, really.
I also was at the L E P C meeting, and Mike explained about the tabletop project that they had done, and how wonderful it was, and how each one of those groups, whether it be the ambulance, the sheriff's office, or whatever, could hear and understand how they interact together. They knew what their job was, but they didn't know how everybody else played into that, and so they felt like it was very good. They're anxious to get together again, they're not going to meet in December because of the holidays, but they're going to meet come January and put together more of that project. I also was at the Toston Bridge meeting, it was held at the senior center, we were just about out of room, to say the least, there was standing room only. But they got a lot of good ideas, I heard what the people had to say, what were their concerns. One family out there, one of the proposals for the corridor was get them on one side and the other one would get them on the other side, so either way, that family's going to feel it, to say the least, if they keep with those same corridors. The safety meeting, we reviewed the traffic accident with this law enforcement pickup and a deer, and discussed what can they do. Brenda explained what, what they do, what is the procedure after an accident, and who investigates it, do they themselves investigate it? No, they don't, the highway department comes in, have a patrol, and investigates and gives them a report, so it's a whole different fish, set of eyes. And we're going to do that even on work comp, people falling, whatever, trying to stay up against the line in different accidents. And I think that was about all.
It was a busy week.
It was a very busy week, it was.
Elaine, I have two unrelated questions that are kind of related.
All right.
Next week, or the week after Thanksgiving is Board of Crime Control, so what I would like from you two is any thoughts that you would like from a county perspective for me to bring forward as a representative of local government for that, and so I will ask you again at the next meeting. And then we three got an email this past week from one of our department heads wanting to know about the social media. The question was, can you go ahead and implement what it is that this particular department had wanted, and we've actually heard back from three that wanted all but one computer in their station or in their department to be close to social media. I didn't want to follow through on that request until hearing from you guys.